Six fifty-nine on Monday, what's today? August twenty-first. And we are calling the school committee meeting to order. We just came from the select board meeting, hearing from the town auditor about some of the items from fiscal two thousand sixteen and some brief conversation around FY two thousand seventeen. So we will start a little late today. The first item on our agenda is a series of minutes. I will start with, let me see. Minutes from May first, two thousand seventeen. Did everybody get a chance to look at those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? May first minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. Any edits or questions, comments on those, May first? All right, hearing none. All in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have, actually, I have it here. Why am I going back and forth? Our minutes from June twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay. Any comments, questions, or edits to the minutes from June twenty-eighth? Okay.
I just want to, I don't remember if we edit. Well, I don't remember if we needed a correction on the Immaculate Art of Mary. I don't, I don't think we did. I think, I think that was fine as, as we just, I think we questioned it based on some of the stuff that was in it because it wasn't exactly, we didn't.
Final, yeah. Yeah, I think the, the question that we had was with respect to the wages because it wasn't, it's not yet determined, so that was the, that was the outstanding item, but thank you for reminding us that. So are you requesting a change anywhere or no?
No.
Okay. All right, so hearing no changes then. All in favor to approve the minutes from June twenty-eighth, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Last, we have the minutes from July twenty-fourth. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or edits to minutes from July twenty-fourth? Okay, hearing none. All in favor to approve the minutes from July twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We don't have any visitors today, so we will skip our visitors' comment section. Our student rep is not here either. I assume she will start coming with the next meeting. New business. There are a few items that require a vote, correct? Let's start with the student parking permit fee increase.
I asked Principal Sullivan.
Hi, Steve.
Hey, everyone.
How are you?
Hello.
Good, thank you. How's everyone doing?
Doing well.
Enjoying your summers, I hope?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good. Still have some time. So we, we've submitted a proposal to increase the parking fee from ninety dollars to a hundred dollars for, to help keep up with parking lot maintenance, administrative fees for parking permits and whatnot. And also, I think it allows us to be proactive should there become any bigger costs in terms of repaving the parking lot, street sweeping. I had talked to John Sullivan today, actually, about street sweeping before school starts and things like that, so I think it allows us to prepare. And it puts us, to be honest, it would still keep us pretty far below some of the other local districts, while South Hadley, Minnetoga, and Belcher Town are all charging a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So it'd still keep us below that, but also help us bring in some additional funds to help with some costs.
How many students park here?
My understanding is last year was about eighty students had parking passes.
So as far as the street sweeping, given that, I think one of the egress will be shared, once they take care at least of that section that just comes in and all that, because they are, I mean, I'm talking about the construction, obviously, there's a lot of debris that they're gonna be cleaning, is...
So they'll take care of certainly the new construction site, but the student parking lot where the students are parking down here, will that might come through?
Yeah, you're right. On the opposite side of the...
Okay, so we're talking about that one only?
Correct.
Okay. Will those students be able to park here at the new lot? No?
Currently, no.
Okay.
That's strictly for students, parking, they have them all numbered, so each student has an assigned parking space.
All right. Any questions?
Um, why only ten dollars?
Um, to be honest, it's more, the ten dollar is more about the timing of it. Having started in early July, this came to my attention in mid-July, and I think putting on families and students a twenty-five or thirty-dollar increase the week before school starts, we didn't feel like would be in our best interest or their best interest. So could we potentially make another proposal in a year or so? Possibly, but we felt like this is a happy medium for where we are right now.
It seems like we're gonna raise the rates, let's raise the rates. A week before school, though. I remember those days. Yep.
No more questions? So we have to vote and approve this increase. Is there a motion to approve the increase in student parking fees from current ninety dollars to a proposed hundred dollars per year?
Per year.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, how many students are there doing this? About eighty?
There were approximately eighty students who have parking passes.
So Jen, you had the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the increase of ten dollars.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Any more questions, concerns?
I guess I have one more question. So this would be about, what, about eight hundred dollars, you think?
Approximately, depending on the number of students who, it could go down or up depending on students who purchase them, but yes.
So how much of an impact is that gonna make on your overall expenses that you're doing right now?
Um, there's a revolving fund, so I think, like I said, it allows us to be proactive, not just getting the whole eight hundred dollars, to spend the eight hundred dollars or approximately a thousand dollars really, if you, the whole amount, but not to spend it all, but the parking lot is in, not terrible repair, but it's not great, so we expect that. In the near future, we're gonna have to either repave it or resurface it, so it would allow us to begin having a little bit of a nest egg to make those repairs.
Okay. That's my question.
That account is a revolving account?
Yeah.
Taking that.
And to Deanne's point, I think, you know, having this now and then, you know, certainly, I think bringing it forward in subsequent years will bring us more in line with other towns and what it really does cost to have a student park on site and maintain that lot.
Yeah.
And we haven't, I'm sorry, and we haven't talked whether we're definitely gonna go to one twenty-five or anything like that, but we felt a small increase now, again, with the timing, and I would have preferred, if we're making an increase, to make it now or make it in February so people can plan and think about it. Unfortunately, we just didn't have that luxury this year with the transition in.
Well, maybe that's an option. You know, you raise it ten dollars now and as you're notifying parents, we say, and oh, by the way, and, you know, because I don't know how it works now, but didn't it used to be where you could get a parking permit for half the year and then you get one for the other half of the year? Is that how it still works?
All the parking permits right now are for the full year.
But certainly, you know, raising it now and then there's gonna be another increase. I mean, I'm looking at these numbers in South Hadley, Minnetoga, Belcher Town, and we're way below the current rate, and yeah, it stinks to have rates increased, but if we're gonna increase the rates for a reason, then let's just do it.
I understand that.
It's my feeling. I'm gonna use, students have already purchased parking.
At this point, no students have purchased parking. We've held off until, until after this meeting.
So what I would suggest, I think it makes sense to be sensitive to the price increase at this point in time, you know, it's, it's a little later, but we should not really forget about possibilities ahead of us. But the one thing that I'm thinking about is this, we're having this conversation about transportation overall. To me, this should not be completely isolated from that conversation. So there is some price elasticity somewhere, if there is a way to consider this as part of the whole, that may help the routes that we have with the buses and all that. I think it would be a better way of thinking about it if we can, if there, if we have the information, instead of just looking at this fee. In some other school districts, obviously, you know, Belcher Town is a huge district and they're charging more, probably they're making a lot of money out of that too, but they also have many bus routes that are running, and I don't know how they're handling that, but they might be thinking in conjunction with those bus routes as they're making the decisions. And they really don't have much to, much to lose going to one twenty-five. We don't want inconvenient students who don't really have the means to come to school by bus because they have to go to work after school or something, I don't know what it might be, but we should consider some of those factors and then we can increase the fees if we have to.
And I don't have Belcher Town in front of me, but South Hadley does have a combination of like a bus parking fee, which is a hundred and fifty dollars. That includes their bus and parking.
Oh, because they are charging for a bus too?
Correct.
Yeah. Which is another thing that we mentioned a few times and we never really considered. When you have that type of dual structure, when you are charged for the bus and your car, then we may be able to see which one makes more sense to play with. Right now, we don't have any bus fees, and, you know, so, yeah, our papers...
So their bus fees, sorry again to interrupt, but their bus fees and parking fees are one twenty-five each individually, and then a hundred and fifty dollars a combination fee.
Yeah, so, okay. But I, I hear you, I mean, ten dollars times eighty, if we have that, it's not gonna really do that much, it leaves us kinda...
And I understand the sensitivity around it, but, you know, we're continually facing budget deficits as we, as we get further into the school year, and this is, you know, these are some small ways that we can mitigate, you know, some of these one-time expenses that come up. Because the reality of it is, it's gonna come up at some point and we're gonna have to face it then. So if we have an opportunity to gain some revenue to just put back into the schools, then that's what we have to do. Because the money is not, there's no money tree.
This is true.
If you wanna propose something different, you can...
No, because I don't, I don't think that...
I mean, I just don't wanna do it without having all the factors in front of us, because we're not doing other things that other school districts are doing, probably are much more impactful than the twenty-five extra dollars that we can get out of, I don't know, eighty students, probably fewer than that potentially this year, given that the class size is gonna be smaller. Yeah. Um, yeah, let's just study those factors. Again, just, you know, some of the things were school choice students, some of them driving from their own towns, some students who are, you know, first coming to school, then going to work. Let's just find out what, what that impact is, we can, we can change it. And, and one of the first things that we can look at, I think that's a great point, if other schools are doing semester by semester, we may be able to do that, and even that we can differentiate. If you get one semester, it's a different price, and if you get two semesters upfront, that's a different set of price.
Yeah, I'm looking really quickly, my understanding, if I remember correctly, in South Hadley is it's also full year, but even if you got your license, say, in January or February, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars, so...
I know that we did it differently, because when my daughter was driving, you could do it by half-year. It was ninety dollars for one half of the year. Yeah, I'm, I'm confused, because I thought it was ninety dollars for half the year, not ninety dollars for a full year.
Yeah, may have been...
No, I know.
Right.
I get it, I know.
How long ago was that?
She graduated in two thousand thirteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, sorry, fourteen.
So, South Hadley does say, again, I don't wanna just keep, but that's what I have in front of me, there are no provision for partial fees regardless of whether or not you start using bus transportation in September or January, the same one hundred and twenty-five dollar fee applies.
All right. Do, do you remember?
No.
No?
Andrew never drew, uh, drove.
Yeah, kids never did either.
Well, I made my kids pay, so.
Yeah.
But I thought it was per half-year.
Well, movie tickets were expensive, so probably made up for the difference.
Well, that's what I'm now wondering. Someone got some gas money.
Okay. So I, I think these are all good points, and if we're gonna be using some of these, if there is a good reason for this, let me just take a step back. You can go anywhere from free, right? At least in theory, to some, some fees. And if we are using these mechanisms to make up for some of these deficits or encounter some one-time cost that we find on our path as the year goes along, then I agree with Deanne that we have to think a little differently. Sensitivity, I, I understand and appreciate that, but we should probably look at, again, all the factors. We should go back, even though it probably will be a much more sensitive topic, we should look at the bus fee opportunities. Because, I mean, that thing is not getting any cheaper, it's, I think it is the largest component, largest single component of expense or something like that in our budget, isn't it?
For what?
For, for bus.
Yeah, bus, well, let's see, the bus...
Seven hundred something thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, there, there are opportunities to look at all these, you know, I'm okay with just going with a hundred dollars for now and then can take a look at it.
Interestingly, there was a, there was an article in the New York Times recently about, of course, it was on a much larger scale, but busing in Boston and how they had a contest for college students to come up with a way to save millions, which they did, on transportation routes, now this was public transportation. So MIT students came up with an algorithm that saved the city millions in transportation costs. So, I mean, I wonder if we're, you know, if our bus companies using computer-aided systems and...
This year was part of the contract bid, that they are required to use scheduling software. Yes.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any more thoughts, questions? Okay, so all in favor to approve the increase from ninety dollars to one hundred dollars for the student parking fee, annual parking fee, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good rest of your summer.
We'll, we'll try.
Absolutely.
Given that we only have a few days of it left, right?
Every minute counts.
Yes.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Granby, two hundred fiftieth celebration parade committee invitation.
So I just wanted to bring to the committee's attention an invitation that we received to participate in the parade, which will be Sunday, June tenth, and I'm sure as we get closer, we can talk about details of how the school committee, whether or not the school committee would like to participate, and if we do, how to participate.
I think we already had a conversation and did say that we would participate. In fact, we've been talked about whether we should be, yeah, on a float or something like that.
I said float, and now it's coming back to me now.
Yeah.
Why did I say that?
I did say that.
So there were a few more things that we talked about at that time.
So like teacher education?
Yeah.
But me.
So, um, before it gets too late, I mean, given that we have, you know, still close to a year, we should probably have a conversation and wrap it up and communicate to the organization committee, two hundred fiftieth organization committee, because I think it's, as a school district that is part of the community, that's, that's a good way for us to be part of it, but also it's a good way to create visibility for our school district, so. So do we have to take any action? I think it's basically, we're saying yes to that, we already had that conversation. Thank you on that. Next one is surplus furniture from West Street.
Yes, so Principal Latoy is doing the painstaking process of going through the schools and also the storage facilities, whether it's basements or closets, and also the storage containers that are on the property, and he is making a recommendation to designate surplus furniture of a hundred student desks and chairs that are located at West Street.
Okay. And these are all unusable?
Yes.
Old pieces? I was surprised to read in that memo that these are the same pieces of furniture that had been sitting in the cafeteria over there, and, you know, yeah, we should have probably, we should have done this even earlier, so. So is there a motion to approve the disposal of the surplus? We have to vote on it, right? Disposal of the surplus furniture at West Street that is already inventoried and considered unusable?
Correct.
Okay.
I can make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay.
Bring the receipts back to the town, is that, does that mean whatever money, I'm assuming it's gonna be really small money, but is that gonna go back to the town?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yes, just their purchases, right? Town property.
So the, the equipment and furniture in our school district, they're all town property?
Yeah.
What's their surplus?
What's their surplus?
Their stewards of the equipment, stewards of the building, they own anything.
Okay. So if, if we purchase anything, does it go through the town and the town pays for it?
No, but I mean, the, the school budget is made up of the chapter seventy money that the town gets, plus the, the local appropriation that the town gives the school.
Okay.
So essentially, it's town money that runs the school.
Okay. All right. So all in favor to, did we vote on this yet? Who did not, right? All in favor to approve the disposal, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chartwell contract?
So this is just an update that we did receive the Chartwell's contract, and it is signed.
Was it as we discussed? Okay. All right. Is there a copy of that contract somewhere in our...
I don't think we made that move, we can't make a copy of it.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Please.
Okay, second grade enrollment.
So, one of our focuses of the district is enrollment, and we are fortunate to have seven students who have moved into the district as town residents to second grade. That doesn't mean that there aren't siblings or other children that have moved into the district with other grade levels, but second grade seems to be an important grade. I don't know what happened, seven, whatever, seven years ago, that all of these children are, are coming to us, but we were tight in second grade to start. We have gone from forty-five students to fifty-two. That really does require a third teacher. That is completely unanticipated, and so I would...
Sounds like an unplanned, unbudgeted expense to me.
And I've already had a conversation with Chris Martin regarding that, and some other unanticipated expenses that we'll talk about when we get to FY eighteen budget. So he's aware, and we will be working towards bringing that forward. Unfortunately, we need the teacher now, and it really is a one-year problem, because these are students that, because they're residents, could be bringing the chapter seventy funding up next year, so it will be an increase to our chapter seventy funding next year, but it is this year that we, we are, we're not anticipating that kind of movement. So the class sizes, with two teachers, would be twenty-six in each of us, and that in second grade is untenable, and so with three, it would be seventeen in each classroom, but then it would allow us at that point to open up any school choice seats, so where we were not opening any school seats, school choice seats in grade two this year.
So when you say bringing it forward, what does that mean?
So the process, working with Chris in the process for town meeting vote on expanding for the funding dis Layton in addition.
And would that be a separate town meeting?
No, I believe it's gonna be part of another, but he wasn't sure, so he's gonna try and bring some things that were... Bring some things forward from the town that needed a town vote, and then also this.
Okay, because I, I was under the impression from the chair of the finance committee that we didn't necessarily always have to bring to the town unplanned, unbudgeted.
I think this up to a certain amount?
Yeah, a hundred thirty thousand was the cap. I wrote it down. Can request directly from the finance committee during the year.
That was a conversation we had, so, I don't know what this amount is.
So I'm hearing that some committee would like me to arrange for a seat with the finance committee to request the fund for the teacher.
Well, it seems like that would be a much straighter path to collecting the funds.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I was very adamant about making sure I had that language clear when I wrote it down, and I asked him to repeat it a couple of times.
I mean, there were some other items that, sorry, like there were some other items even mentioned that if you do need additional funds, you can come to us, so this was...
Yes. There were two different funds.
Yes.
One is this reserve funds, and the other one is called capital plan funds, and it's, the one hundred and thirty thousand cap was from the reserve funds.
So how does this play out with, second grade was the grade that had the teacher that was retiring halfway through the year, and you were gonna have a new teacher start halfway through the year? How does, how does that play out with this?
At this point, we would be hiring a full-time teacher to begin the school year, so there would be three classrooms, so it doesn't really impact that change over...
So there'll still be a change for that one class?
So if our October first enrollment submission includes these students, we still do not get funds for them for this year?
Because chapter seventy is already set, it won't be changed.
The chapter seventy is set based on some assumption.
Right, but it doesn't, I mean, there's never like a review and reissue of chapter seventy, I mean, what's already been put into the state budget and what's been issued, will be issued to the towns, it's not gonna change. It'll get caught up with the following year, but it's not, it's not like school choice where you report your number's ten-one and they will, by December, true up what you actually get for an award. They, they look at your year workforce numbers and they make the determination on the budget as to how much chapter seventy will be allocated to each town, and once the budget is set, that doesn't change again for a year.
But doesn't that mean that they owe us the funds for that student? Where do the funds go?
You have them next year.
Yeah, but that's gonna be for next year.
Yeah.
What about this year?
Talk to your state.
Exactly, there's, I mean, this whole thing is messed up.
That doesn't make sense to me.
You can talk to your state.
Yeah. No, I don't even know that they're gonna be able to understand or solve it because this is out of control, convoluted process.
Yeah, it's based on a funding formula that the student council has a certain period of time and they get, come up with a foundation budget.
And I was asking based on that school choice story that I remember, that if they are in our books by October first, we get their money for this year, correct?
That is true.
But for, but for students who are becoming member of our community, which actually could bring more revenue, we have to find the funds this year and next year. Okay.
That, I'm sorry, but that makes no sense.
I don't know how you come up with these rules, Mark.
I have to think hard. Do we stay up late? It's a long ride.
So do we have any sense of any kind of interest for second grade, school choice, and then besides these students? And you said it wasn't open before?
Right, we didn't open, so we can put the word out that we are open for second grade.
I'm just saying it's two weeks or a week and a half before it's closed, right?
Yeah, I think it's too late now. I think we missed the, the window on that one. They're still coming. We had another eighth grade student last week.
Yeah, you never know.
Yeah. Well, I, you know, my understanding is that this coming school year's story is gonna be close to what we had hoped it would be based on moves that were made. We wanted to stabilize first and keep the numbers more or less similar to the previous year, you know, we don't know yet which way it's gonna go, but it's not gonna be a dramatic decline it seems, like previous years. And hopefully, you know, not sharing too much information to make everyone disappointed, but looks like there are even more opportunities in terms of school choice that we can't really respond to because the numbers are not such that we can open a new classroom for those incoming students other than putting them in an already crowded classroom for their grade level. It's a grade level issue. So, you know, there are, there are, the planning that we were talking about was to really, to account for possibilities, possibilities and opportunities of this nature, but we did not do that. We basically wanted to be as tight, we, the collective we, as tight as it gets, whatever you see this year probably is gonna be that or fewer, and turns out some factors are influencing folks to show interest in our school district this year. Is that, is that fair to say?
Are there, are there any of those students that are concentrated in one grade level, like in second grade?
Yes.
Kindergarten? So, so is it possible, again, for us to call this another unplanned, unbudgeted expense and?
I think the difference with kindergarten is that it's school choice students that we have not been able to accommodate in kindergarten because our enrollment is full. Kindergarten is the grade that you want to take in the school choice? Certainly at the youngest levels, so they experience Rambies programming. So that is a frustration of ours, certainly at Principal Latoy's, that we have had to say no originally to six families who wanted to bring kindergarten students in. When we got to six, I had him call and confirm who was interested. At that point, we had three that were willing still and then we just had a fourth. Look, we are not open at kindergarten right now. We would have to open another classroom.
So not to get off topic too much, I'm just kinda curious. I had a conversation with somebody this week. How, how much work do we do with the daycares that are in town? Try and, to try to get some school choice kids, because I think that can kinda be a, a good gauge as to whether or not we can pull some other kids in.
So we have a partnership with Children's First, having discussions about that, trying to establish exactly what we're talking about, which is a positive first experience with the Rambies community and then potentially looking at school choice and rolling into the district. In terms of our preschool, we have our own preschool program. That is not a school choice program, it's an inclusion program. So we don't have an opportunity to do that at preschool, but we certainly are having that conversation with Children's First. And the flip side is Children's First opened a kindergarten program in their new facility. And, I mean, it's kind of, it doesn't, I mean, if they didn't and they didn't take some of the Rambies students, we would be having to open, our conversation would be just like second grade, we have to open another kindergarten classroom. So the anticipation is that those students will come back to us in grade one, in which case we have the three teachers of grade one.
But do we see an opportunity to pick up some of the other kids that may be in that classes?
Right, that's the hope.
Okay.
So regardless of what we are able to do, the message that comes from this is that this is not necessarily a forgotten district that, you know, nobody shows any interest in. We, you know, we have to say no because we did not plan for extra money to be able to open a classroom. We have no buffer to allow us to do this kinda stuff.
Well, language is important. It's not that we did not plan.
No, it's, it's beyond us. We did not get the, yeah.
We couldn't plan.
We couldn't.
Yes.
We did not get the funds that were requested to be able to have, yes.
But I think it's important that, you know, when we look at our revolving accounts, this is why school choice typically holds a year's balance, because if you had a year's balance of school choice in the revolving school choice account, then you would be able to say if we take some school choice money and invest in a classroom, a teacher, and all of the resources for that, that's going to pay off dividends in the following year. But because we're using school choice for general operating expenses, this is where we've handcuffed, we've been handcuffed by that decision. So either people don't understand why school choice should have a balance or they're making a decision and, you know, saying, come back with unanticipated expenses and that's a difficult way to budget and a difficult way to manage a district.
So what do we need for, for this item that you shared with us?
Well, I think what I heard, I would need a vote to add a second grade teacher and then I would take the directive to bring that forward to Mr. Martin as a request of the Finance Committee.
Now, is that something that you, do you have to, that was part of my question of what, what's the process? Do you have to go through Chris Martin? Is it something that you, he then requests of the Finance Chair or in committee?
I would think so, yes.
Is that, is that the typical protocol?
I mean, this is-
Or if he, yeah, I mean, if, if then Chris says you can go directly, then-
Or through the Chair, to the Select Board Chair, to the Finance Chair, I will find out, because this is the first time I've ever been led reached unanticipated expenses in the parent in which I had been told it should have been done.
Hopefully it's not five-step bureaucracy, just, you know, we say request, whichever one is the shortest path.
I mean, Chris was very open, very open conversation to him, that we have this unanticipated expense, he's been made aware, so it will not come as a surprise. So how we move forward with that, we will, we'll see.
I would just like to make sure we take the most direct route.
Robyn, you had a question?
Yes, my question is, you're covering this school year. What happens for the following school year? Will that second grade teacher become a third grade teacher to meet the needs of that number, or are there so many in first grade that you will need that third, second grade teacher and then next year you're looking at hiring a third, third grade teacher?
It depends.
Sorry.
Yeah, it just depends on the enrollment and that's something that we track all year long. It's something that we track at the end of the year. If, if families are not going to opt to continue in school choice or we hear that families are moving. You know, we do try to keep class sizes at the very early ages of literacy at the seventeen and eighteen, so that students have the most opportunity not to need intervention because they're receiving direct instruction from their teacher. And then by third, fourth, and fifth, there's a little bit more wiggle room in terms of class size and.
It's to, and I'm just thinking out loud, would you request commitments of school choice students by a certain date, you know, like if we sent out, you know, a commitment letter of sorts?
The grade level that we had opened.
Yes, I agree. That would be the best case scenario.
That's the goal.
Realistically speaking.
We'll get there.
Would it make sense in the meantime, you know, so that we can plan more efficiently?
At this point, we have had no rejection is the wrong word, but denial of an opening. So when we, you know, when a parent comes in and there's an open slot, they have accepted it. I mean, we've accepted them. We haven't had anyone withdraw that I'm aware of that we are reserving a spot for. I don't think that's a, has been an issue for us.
So the new school choice slots that we opened or voted for, what happened to those?
So actually, we're gonna work on for you for September fifth, a document that brings together some, hopefully accurate information. We have information on school choice in a moment in a couple of different places, so basically in the hands of the administrative assistants at the school level and Catholic parochial at the district level. So we're gonna spend some time over the next couple of weeks before the next meeting, really putting down the information in a way that, that is more able to track school choice and the answer to choice now accurately.
But those were additional seats. Did we-
So we would be able to tell you how many seats in each grade level were filled, how many were left, how many we were not able to offer because there were no seats left. That would be-
Okay.
So, you know, you would say, we, we would say kindergarten, you know, these were the requests for school choice. Zero were offered because there were no seats available.
Okay.
So are we able to meet, getting a second grade teacher in by the first day of school at this point in time?
Well, we did pose for an anticipated opening, which we're allowed to do pending funding, pending this decision. So we certainly are down the road of being able to have the teacher first day of school when it is anticipated, so people know that when they're applying, that it's, it's incumbent on the decision of sort of heading.
And there's a plan to, because I know the classes already went out, you're gonna be with this teacher.
Right.
You've got a plan to take, to sort all that out?
Yeah.
I'm assuming you did.
Yes.
And next year, I'm curious to find out how the new school will influence the numbers as well. So we may be in a, hopefully we are in a much more different situation where we're not just talking about one class moving up, we're talking about many requests coming our way so that we can consider how we're gonna be planning around multiple grades, multiple levels for the next several years. But we also have to do some work around that. We can't just expect that this nice building is going up and then somebody's gonna see and come over.
And it's very telling that in grade seven, these are movements, these are, you know, people moving into Rambies, so I think as people see an opportunity, as we talked about, you know, with homes becoming available, you know, families making that decision to, to choose Rambies and our responsibility to make the school system as combiting and rigorous and as innovative as it can be to attract even more of those to be residents, because that's really where we're developing sustainability for Rambies.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the request for funds for a second grade teacher to accommodate the seven additional students who are coming to our district this coming year?
I'll happily make that motion.
Great. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any more questions, discussion? All good? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Hopefully we have many good stories like this in the coming days. Next item, well, this, this is the final item of our new business section going into old business, strategic plan and review.
So in your packets, I think this will fit here, I included a draft of the school committee goals. And basically what I tried to do is to bring the conversation that we had on August eighth into some organization. And this, again, is a draft, so as you discuss, certainly they can have the revised, but the idea here is that these would be the school committee goals that would then drive the district goals and then drive the superintendent goals and then drive the principal and the school level goals.
Are we going to apply these to, any update on the strategic plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so are we going to schedule additional sessions for that strategic plan?
Yes.
And with participation from other stakeholders, okay. Do you know when we need to start that conversation?
Soon.
Okay.
Didn't we set a follow-up meeting October sixteenth?
That's what I thought.
Not here?
That's the follow-up workshop?
I don't have mine. Can anybody confirm that?
Well, it's a school committee meeting. I don't know if we decided to make it a strategic meeting.
So the sixteenth is a regular school committee?
Yes.
Right, that we designated as, because I won't, I won't be at that one.
So we're gonna designate one of our regular meetings for that? Can we do it a separate session?
Well, if the answer could be there, it's probably a different day.
Yeah, would there be an interest in having a separate session for strategy?
I think that sounds great. I thought that was an incredibly productive meeting.
Yeah.
We could, um, so you would have, if we kept it on a Monday, you could do the twenty-fifth of September, that would give us some time to bring the Strategic Planning Committee together.
Yeah. Can we not schedule anything for that week yet? Because I don't know my schedule.
We could do the tenth of October, which would be the day after tomorrow, this day on the night.
What day is that?
Tuesday.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be able to do Tuesdays.
Okay.
Right now.
Wednesday, you're, Thursday. And the third, oh.
So let me check on, well-
Well, we could do, if you don't mind having the same week as a school committee, I don't, you have October third, fourth, and fifth. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Maybe the fourth. Tuesdays and Thursdays are gonna be tougher.
I can do the fourth. I think I can do the fourth, too.
Yeah, those are the two weeks. I don't know my schedule yet.
Oh, you don't know the fourth either?
Yeah, the last week and the first week of October.
September twentieth?
That's, that works, no? Can we just do, do a doodle, Cheryl? Can we do a doodle to find out?
I will do it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yes, yeah, we will.
Right, yeah.
I have a couple of schedules on Tuesdays.
That's cool. That's cool. Anything else on the strategic plan or our review? I think we're going to pick it up at this meeting that we're scheduling, right?
So you're going to review the goals at that meeting? The draft?
We go into, that's a good question. What should we do at that meeting? We should review the goals and refine them, but there should be probably a little more than that for that meeting.
Well, if that's the case, I'm sorry, I think I misunderstood you, then I would, I would push that one forward to the beginning of September.
September or October?
September.
Okay. So do it early.
Right. Well, what I was thinking that the next session would be, we'd start to drill down a little, a little more depth with not only the goals, but objectives and tasks and.
Well, if we do that, then we're basically updating the strategic plan. I think the conversation was to have stakeholders outside our committee to be part of it.
So if we met in earlier September and just focused on the goals to make sure that they captured what we talked about at the work group, plus anything from the strategic plan prior, brought that to the strategic group and then had one more in October, early October, I think you could finalize the school committee goals, district goals, and then we would, and then you would really begin the strategy plan.
Right.
And get that down on paper.
Yes.
So you would be looking at, I think as long as we have the goals, then the schools can begin to start having the same conversations about, all right, these are the goals, these are the major objectives, what's our role in this? And then, and then, you know, by, by mid-October, it would be the, the long-term plan and strategies aligned to.
So it would make sense to have the stakeholders review the goals?
Yeah.
And then gain their feedback for how they interpret that? Because I would be interested in what that means to them. You know, how do you see us achieving, you know, goal number one?
Right.
What's important to you to get us to achieving that, that first goal? Right?
Yeah.
Because that is going to, that, that is going to help us determine the objectives in each goal.
Yes.
And how we're going to get there.
To be honest, the only gap that I have that I have to find some time to reconcile in my head at least, is that we came up with all these goals from the school committee's perspective.
So, right, these are school committee goals.
Right. Not school district.
Correct.
Goals, which in my mind should be the ones driving the overall strategy. Not the school, school committee is part of the overall strategy, but we're not the most important part of it. We are one part of it. So how do we get to that next level where we talk, start talking about the district level goals that will drive? And I thought, again, that was going to be, once we have these, these are our goals, invite the stakeholders, set out the framework as to what we're trying to achieve, do we all agree where we want to be, by when? And then we start writing the objectives under that and then we get into tasks and all that. Maybe we should have that meeting early, I agree, early September then, to have these conversations at that meeting instead of having it now. Refine our thoughts, what we want to do, our next steps, and then we can start inviting folks for the district portion of it.
Yes. Because we need to be very concise and clear in what our charges, right?
Yep.
For, for this working group.
Yes.
So to just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Absolutely. That would be worthwhile. Yep. I agree. Okay. So early September then, do we, can we still doodle it instead of taking our time right now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Our next item is FY '17 budget.
Okay. Well, normally you guys get the budget in that pretty Excel form. I apologize, but I uploaded today the old paper forms because as I was updating it, you know, there are some changes that have occurred towards the end of the year, payments that are made under lines we don't usually use because it gets towards the end of the year. And you kind of have to backfill and make space in that long train of the budget so that accounts don't get out of sync and what have you. And as I was doing that and trying to do the encumbrances for next year, I ended up getting a couple thousand dollars off. And after working at it all day, I said, I'm not going to produce something that's a few thousand dollars below the paper budget. And I will get you the updated Excel version and put it in your, in your drive. But in a nutshell, if you look at the FY '17 budget and you go to the last page of the local budget, currently there is on, in this report, $707,189.23 remaining in the budget. Now, a couple of things you have to keep in mind is the way things post to the budget, if we have any accounts payable warrants, which the last one we just processed this past week, those apply in here and Nancy will post those as of June 30th, so they're all in here. The way payroll works is it, as soon as the year ends, the fiscal year ends, the payments start coming out of FY '18, even if they're FY '17 pay. So basically, teachers who get paid their 26 weeks over the summer, their money that was divided into 26 weeks gets paid, but it gets run in the new budget. So it runs in different lines, encumbered lines, and those have to be totaled in FY ' '18 and then added to FY '17. So if you look at the figure of the $514,000, that is what's processed in FY '18, but it's FY '17 summer money that was, FY '17 money that was allocated for FY '17, but the way the software works, it runs in the next fiscal year. There is one more pay, 825 is the last summer pay, so that's another $160,000, 160, 855.34. So on paper, the local budget has, or should have, $31,747.19 remaining at the end of the fiscal year. Couple of things we have to keep in mind, that $31,000 includes our $10,000 contingency for food service. We know we're paying eight and change and I need to have a conversation with the auditor to see exactly what is the figure that we need to accommodate for if we do for the inventory and find out what that number is. So it's going to be a lesser amount of $31,000. So, and then if there are any additional expenses that happen to be flowing through, as of right now, we've processed the last warrant, so these are all the expenses that we know about. If there are any encumbrances that would, that we would need to account for going forward that would still be charged against the FY '17 budget, Chris Martin gives us until September 15th to get in the list. Like just say, for example, there's some expense coming in or we still have an encumbrance where we haven't gotten the bill yet, you know, we have to tell him, okay, we still are waiting for this bill for $2,500 for whatever, maybe it's some tutoring service that somebody didn't fill us for, so that he can account for it against the FY '17 budget and then when the bill comes in, it gets paid. So there could be some additional expenses, but yeah, we're pretty close to having fully expended the FY '17 budget. You have any questions about the local budget?
Yeah. So the 514, let me start line by line. The 514, 515, that's already paid, right? That's salary that was paid. So why doesn't it get encumbered into FY '17?
It's, it's just, it's the way the accounting software works, and this isn't the only accounting software that works this way. Some accounting software is as soon as the fiscal year changes and you start running payrolls with different dates that are not in the fiscal year, they don't post any transactions. So basically what it does is it creates a mirror of the budget lines in the next fiscal year, all called encumbrance instead of local.
Yep.
And it all gets posted there and basically you have to do the math and add the two together.
But in your books, you, you already took that out.
Right. Well, I, that's right. I'm saying this 514 is what we already have in, in the FY '18 budget to the penny, so I'm subtracting that out because Chris Martin's going to want us to say, okay, this is what you spent, this is what you spent in FY '18 for FY '17, add them together. And then unless there's any changes, there's also another $160,000 payroll that still has to run and that will be the last of the FY '17 payrolls running in FY '18.
Okay. And the, what we call the final summer, what is, what is in there? The 160 plus?
So that's basically everybody who gets summer pay. So it's teachers, paras, custodians and those folks, since they're on a fiscal year, they start the new year. But the way the teacher and para contracts work, if they choose 26 weeks, all their money, you know, let's say it's $50,000 in FY '17, but they want 26 weeks, they want to be paid over the summer. They get paid, say, $42,000 of that in FY '17, that other amount is divided out so they can still get paid over the summer, but the summer's no longer in this fiscal year. So that money has to be paid out over the summer, gets, gets put into FY '18, but is assumed to be charged because that money was held and reserved in FY '17.
Okay. So this is.
Well, it's not, it's not so much backing out. I think basically what happens is, I mean, in some, and I don't think Chris does this, this is my first year going through the finishing of a year, some, some towns would actually take that money and physically move it as a budget item into '18 and then, you know, net it out. Generally, I think what happens is you just say, okay, this is what you got left in '17, this is your '17 to '18, add them together and you move the budget.
Which would you prefer?
Second, it's easier because I just have to total it up and add it.
So is it fair to say that, say the 160 that we call summer, it's not necessarily for work that is done during summer, but it's because of the preference of those who get paid to have their paycheck spread across the year that, you know, we have, we have these amounts now lingering into the summer?
Right.
Okay.
It's all money that, that was FY '17 money. It's just not getting paid out now.
Okay.
So they were just paid less throughout the year?
Correct.
Yeah. All right.
So, I mean, we have a few, we'll probably have a few thousand dollars left and, you know, one of the things that we, you know, should look to do if the town allows it, we can do some reclassing, is one of the, one of the things that is happening as we go through and look at school choice, ideally what we'd like to do with the way the budgets have been built is we take the entire school choice amount that we anticipate getting for the fiscal year and say, we're going to apply that to the budget. And going through school choice and true, you know, getting it trued up for the end of the year, what, what happened last year and what has happened for many years is when these summer pays happen, as they did last year. Last year, FY '16 payments were made in FY '17 because people were getting summer pays. That portion of it that was allocated to school choice was being charged to school choice and money for school choice for FY '17 at that time was coming in because it's the new fiscal year. So that money paid FY '16 expenses, which for school choice doesn't matter because school choice is, is a revolving account. But what it does is it gives you not a full budget of your money for FY '17 or any fiscal year. You can't say, I have this much money for FY '17 because the way it's running now, I have 10 months of one fiscal year's money and two months of another fiscal year's money. So it's just makes budgeting more difficult. So what would be nice is as much as possible, if we have any money, if we can reclass any expenses, any of these expenses that we're paying out of school choice for these summer pays this year and just clear them out, charge them to the local budget and beef up school choice, it just makes the school choice figure that we're using as a revenue amount more realistic for us because we can say it's the full fiscal year. It's not, well, 10 months of this fiscal year and whatever we think, we think we're going to get next July and August.
And is that standard operating protocol?
It, it's not, it's done some places. Generally, if you have, you know, a school choice fund, if you have a year's worth, like Cheryl was talking about earlier, it doesn't matter because you just use that school of choice money, but you're still budgeting what you expect to get in.
So this, in other words, is a way of us sort of creating that additional or that kind of little, it's a buffer to these, buffer, thank you, I was going to say like a little saving account, but a buffer to be used later on?
Yeah.
Because we know these are coming. I mean, so is this a conversation that you've already had with Chris?
No, not yet.
And so it's on, it's on the agenda for you to have it with Chris?
Right.
Now, is that something that you can bring back to the school committee as a follow-up?
Sure.
To let us know how the conversation went?
Sure.
That would be a good thing to know, right?
Ask.
All right. First, we need to see how much we have left.
But that's, that's a good point. The other thing is that, you know what I believe this does? Because we are mixing two fiscal years, the primary way town residents can see school expenses is to go look at the annual town report. And then when they add up the numbers, they see these salary figures and everything else that are mixed between two different years. And then everybody just goes out and says, hey, you know what? I have this salary number here and, you know, the school is saying that it's not that salary, it's something, something different than this. So now we're trying to reconcile whatever we know to be the figure versus whatever is shared because two fiscal years are combined because of the spread of the payment schedule. That doesn't make it easy for anybody.
Well, you know, couldn't, couldn't it be something as simple as putting an asterisk next to the numbers and just?
You know, that's a good idea.
Ultimately, when, when Tom Scanlet or when they do the final financials, I have no doubt the town is going to take the FY '17 money that's spent in FY '18 and add it together. There, I mean, if this salary, and in my example, the $15,000 salary, the $42,000 is paid in '17 and $8,000 is paid for '17 and '18, I mean, ultimately, we know the salary's $50,000, that's what we budgeted and that's what needs to be added together to complete the financials. So ultimately, it's, you're going to use all the funds for that fiscal year in combined.
No, I, I get what you're saying and I get what he's saying. From the nuts and bolts, that makes perfect sense from an accounting perspective, right? But mostly these people reading these reports are not accountants. All they're seeing is that the numbers don't sync up.
Yeah. I mean, if you look at this, obviously you say, oh, we had to do the $707,000 and you're not going to see that number change. But, I mean, when they actually do like a balance sheet or if they do school funds, that number's going to get trued up to include all the FY '17 expenses, I've no doubt.
No. In the ledgers, everything will be reconciled and it's going to be correct. I guess what we're talking about is that the only portion of those numbers that is visible to the public is in the annual town report and some of the figures, especially with respect to salaries, can be, can be inflated because of some of the, you know, payment schedule issues or whatever it might be. May even be not an issue, it may be the preference, but it looks different. And I know this because at times, somebody forwards something from say a Facebook post saying, oh, so and so is making this much. And we know for a fact that there is no way and, you know, that person is not making that much. We know it, but those aren't the stuff that we can share, but because, you know, we have to report in different ways, in annual report, it shows differently. Anyway. Okay. So September 15th, we should be done with this?
Yeah. By September 15th, we have to report anything else that we're going to encumber that we have expenses continuing for '17.
Okay.
So that should be the, you know, we need to know where we stand by that.
The monthly book close files that we are receiving, are we looking at those and so far are we seeing that we are reconciling those line items?
We, we are in most categories. There's a few that were off and I think what we need to do is have a sit-down with the town and really look at the detail and see, there's probably, probably things that were allocated in one account and not in others. So that's, as we finalize this, we need to kind of nail that down.
And I think that's, that's where I want to go. How difficult would it be to really do those, to have those conversations as we go as opposed to waiting all the way until the end? If you think that at the end of the year, you know, it's so easy for us to sit down and then reconcile the books, that's fine, but it seems to me that when we accumulate so many months, it makes it much more difficult instead of just reconciling it. I'm asking the question from a process perspective for the most part because last year when we sat down, we said that we create a process and it wouldn't be difficult really to put a process together. We can just put it together in a couple of hours and say, this is our process. I don't know, I don't want to call it lack of willingness or I don't want to call it, you know, lack of time at this point, but we have to find a way to create that process so that when those book close figures come in, if there is anything that doesn't make sense, I guess that's the purpose of it. We say, hey, you know what? These don't make sense. We're going to reclassify, we're going to do something with it. It would be helpful to all of us and we don't have to really worry so many days left to September 15th, now that we have to reconcile so many different line items.
I, I agree. You know, part of it though is we, you know, we have to have some kind of, I guess, agreement with the town because obviously I can't do it alone. I can see my records, what gets posted on the school side, but then if something's off, you kind of have to see the detail on the town side. And right now, we get the town account totals, but if there's anything that's off, I have to work with Chris to be able to see, why, why do you have something different than what I have? Why is my total different?
I'm, I'm surprised there aren't, you know, kind of just quick checking meetings, you know, on a, on a bi-weekly basis to say, okay, here's what I'm, I mean, I, I would think that considering the, the volume of the, you know, the line items and just, the whole point of this is to reconcile, you would think as a matter of protocol, there would be more communication on a, on a regular basis. Just these quick 10-minute check-ins. Is that, is that an unreasonable expectation?
And I think we're getting, to me, it is very reasonable and I think we're getting closer to an ideal state, but it looks like. closer to an ideal state, but it looks like there are some more opportunities that we should be exploring, to make it easier for everyone. Because what you're saying is absolutely correct. If there are discrepancies between what the town is posting and what we believe to be the case, what I'm saying is, we should share those discrepancies immediately so it's on the record, as opposed to waiting all the way till the end, which makes it very difficult at that point to.
Well, then it's forensics. You know, then you get, you know, you're having to go back, and it's just, it's just a lot more challenging.
It is.
But we could certainly make a request, it's a regular schedule meeting.
Even if it's a conference call, I mean, everything is on the computer and.
Or an email, honestly. I mean, to start with, we can start with baby steps for any one of these things. If emails don't do them, we can go to phone call, we can go to, you know, face-to-face, but we have to start somewhere to have those interactions for the smaller discrepancies so that they don't get much larger at the end of the year, which probably makes it more difficult for you guys as well, on both sides.
So how would a request like that be made? Who makes it and how would it be made?
I guess it's a matter of saying.
Initial thought would be that the school department, the school committee would want to create a, something of a draft policy around business operating, operating business protocols that would include monthly check-ins with the town leadership, and then if it was policy, we would then therefore go do it.
But wasn't that one of the findings? Like, wasn't that finding number one that should be monthly reconciliations?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it is. And policy, we can do the policy, but we can't even create a very quick process map that would have only so many boxes, you know, I'm pretty sure that it's not going to have more than, you know, ten boxes, if that, I'm just being generous. This is a trigger, this is what happens, when this happens, we're going to do this, when that happens, we're going to do that, and these are the ways for us to reconcile discrepancies or communicate discrepancies, if it's a communication process. And let's start with that. And again, this is not really, I think we are getting better, and this is not really pointing fingers, but I think we still have opportunities to make it better, to make it much more, much more crisp, so that it happens when we have those discrepancies identified.
So when we say, let's start with that, who starts with that? And how's it going to get done, is my question? It sounds like Cheryl is saying, you know, it needs to come from the school committee. And to Mike's point, this was something that the auditor or whoever it was had put in their management letter, so we can reference that letter as our starting point. So we can formalize it, and yeah, it's going to be quick and everything else, but who's going to do it and when are we going to get it done?
I have no problem if anybody wants to work together, just putting that process map together.
Now, then my other question, you keep talking about some unforeseen expenses that may still pop up for 2017. Have we started instigating or trying to implement more aggressive policies on needing that information, like if we don't have it by such-and-such a day, then we can't really, I mean, we have to draw on it and say it at some point, right?
You do. One of the things that we wanted to talk about, just to start the year off at the next admin meeting, is just kind of going over procedures, the PO process, you know, and just making sure that everybody understands how that flow works, how you encumber funds, how you, at the end of the year, should either be looking to close that out or explain what's happening with this expense that's still sitting there as expected to be paid, but you don't have it yet. You know, what kind of conflicts with that sometimes is, some of these expenses are in people's hands who are school year employees, and you don't find out about it until school starts again, and somebody's got this invoice that needs to be paid, that's why it can sometimes get dicey. I mean, we're not necessarily anticipating any of these expenses, but we never anticipate these expenses, that's why we don't anticipate. Somebody walks into the bill for whatever, Pearson for twelve hundred dollars, because they bought something, but they forgot to turn it in, into a PO.
Yeah. Even for all those, we can create a process. We can, I mean, this is a matter of saying, these are the rules, this is how we're going to do all these things. The worst thing that can happen is for all these parties, including us, to wait for some other person to put together those documents. Let's just do whatever we can do and propose it as, you know, as our draft. If there's agreement, we go with that. If not, there are suggestions to make changes or improvements, we can do that too. At least, you know, we would have something in front of us. And we can say, hey, you know, it looks like this is not working. We can look at that process map, for instance, and say, this is where it seems like everything is breaking down. We're not really getting whatever we need to get. Or we're not really, it looks like we're not receiving whatever we need to receive in terms of invoices that are delayed. Or we're not sending certain things, certain pieces of information, it seems, at this point in time, as planned, or whatever it might be. But that gives us an opportunity to really have something documented in front of us. Otherwise, we're basically groping, hoping to find answers whenever these things happen.
And we have a set of procedures, so we can share those, you know, at the next admin meeting, and we can share those with the staff versus policy. And I don't know how formalized you want to get, just the procedure within, you know, the school for handling purchases and things like that, I don't know, that jumps to a policy level, it can be procedural, but procedurally, yeah, we can, we have that at the ready, we can just tweak it a little bit and share that, so definitely.
So getting back to this other piece of it, these, you know, these kind of check-ins around closing out the budget, what makes sense to you guys? Is it weekly? I mean, how would you want to formalize this? And before you mention that, I'll give you a second, but, that management letter, I know that we've seen it, but can you, do you have access to that?
It's in your folder.
Where is it?
I think it's Scanlon Audit Letter.
I thought it was a brand-new letter, but it was the old one.
Yes.
The auditor trying to make sure that everything is taken care of.
So I'll work with you on that. We can even do this through email.
Yeah.
But I think if we use the Scanlon Audit Letter as our jumping off point.
Alright. Then we can bring it to the full committee.
And then we can bring it to the full, you and I can just kind of email drafts back and forth and figure out how to position it, and.
Can we do it that way? Okay.
Well, it's just the two of us, and all we're doing is emailing.
It is, but remember, subcommittees are two people, and they are still bound by open meeting laws.
Can we do this, just?
Five?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'll look into it, we can probably at least create our versions and then put it together and bring it to the full committee that way.
Well, that's just.
Could we create a budget subcommittee?
It is, but that requires that we go with the open meeting law, we get together somewhere where, you know, people have access to, yeah. This is what I, you know, what I found out last time we created.
No, and I get what you're saying, we can both do it, but it just seems like we're both doing the same thing, and I don't really necessarily like doing things that I know other people are doing, just for the sake of doing it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just kind of a waste of time.
We can do drafts and then pass on, instead of just discussing, you know, draft, pass on, you add whatever you need to add, then we'll bring it to the school committee, or the other way around.
Alright.
Okay.
So getting back to the question I asked you.
Yep.
What makes sense?
Definitely quarterly, I think you'd want to do that. You know, monthly is probably the best in terms of just keeping up with things and keeping the load light and smaller amounts. You know, I don't know what the town's availability is going to be for that, but if I had my troopers, yeah, I'd rather just do it monthly, get the discrepancies resolved and move on.
Well, and when you think of monthly check-ins, are you talking, are you thinking phone calls, conference calls, emails, face-to-face?
Well, I mean, I always like a phone call, just for documentation purposes, about, you know, say, we've done reconciliation, we agree or whatever, or we're off by this amount in this account, can you send me the detail? And then from there, you know, if you need to really drill into it, then you can have a phone call or we have you, but I would think an email is just a good way to level set.
Alright.
Know that either we agree, or this is the account that we think we have to review. And that gives us a trail of, you know, what's transpiring or what needs to be resolved from off the month.
So then we can just have a big tip-off, we do it once a month, school committee, just to keep it all yip and up, and then run camera and.
I mean, it's just, this is to make sure that the process is working well, it's not just, it's not for really, anybody except for us, because then at the end, everybody gets tense, because everybody's expecting something different, and we only have so many days until the end of the, well, until the book close, to be able to make any changes and adjustments, so, alright.
So when do we want to have this? Do we want to have this at the next school committee meeting?
Which is next, in two weeks. Do you have availability to be able to do it? Alright, so next meeting it is.
And who's doing the draft? Am I doing the draft and sending it to you?
How would you like to do it? Would you prefer to do the draft? I can do the draft and send it to you.
I would prefer you do the draft.
Okay, I'll do the draft, I'll send it to you.
I will critique your work.
I would appreciate that, thank you for your feedback. We'll probably, we're not going to do the feedback anyway, we're going to bring it, once you make the changes, we're going to bring it to the full committee.
Exactly.
Okay. Anything else on FY seventeen?
Just grants, they're also attached, and similarly, whenever we have salary, it's running in FY eighteen, so I just did the FY seventeen, and I took the amount that has been running in FY eighteen, so you can see the true balances. You know, the health grant, that should be fully expended, it's salary, same thing with Title I. Title II, we will ultimately have an allowance left, a few thousand dollars, that we'll write the carryover amount, because it just was all the PD that got done this year, because we had some leftover money from last year, we wanted to make sure we fully expended it, so we offloaded some of the expenses from seventeen to sixteen, which gave us a little bit of money left over in sixteen, so, I mean, seventeen, so we'll be able to carry that. And then if you look at the next page with the sped grants, four hundred and eleven dollars in one, the rest are zeroed out, so we will be fully expending those grants.
Okay. And we're spending the grants because they have to be spent, right? Because they belong to the fiscal year.
Right, you don't want to waste money.
Yep. Any questions on the grants? Okay. Anything else on seventeen?
I guess the only other thing I'll mention about seventeen is the other money that's not available, is, if you remember, we did that transfer out of transportation into, sped transportation into regular sped, because we needed it for tuitions, and it was a pretty good budgeting estimate, because in total, for our transportation budget, we underspent it by six hundred and eighteen dollars. So then, out of that thirty-one thousand we have left, six hundred and eighteen of that is transportation money in total. You can't spend it because it's part of the separate article, it gets put in with the budget, but it can only be spent for transportation, and we don't have any more expenses, but at least, it's a good thing that the school committee approved, and we decided to move the transportation money out, because obviously, we needed it for tuitions, but it, we came really close in terms of expending the transportation warrant with the town.
Quick question, on the substitute file that you shared, is there anything, any takeaways from us, or anything that we should be looking at?
I guess, I, you know, there's the teachers, and there's also in Paris, cover teachers, so I gave you all the lines, but if you can look, the takeaway, I guess, is, for the budget, it's got to be expended, except for seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, so it's very close in terms of budgeting versus expended. You know, we budget the main three lines, we don't really budget the sped lines, because they're lesser, and, you know, you can only dice in orange so many ways, but if you look at the overall costs and the overall budget, the eighty-three thousand dollars budgeted for subs, we spent all of it, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. And then I know that the committee had a question about how many certified teacher days were used last year, and there were two hundred and eighty-six certified teacher days, so that little calculation there is, it would be initial fourteen hundred and thirty dollars if you were to spend five dollars more per day for certified teacher remuneration.
Okay. And honestly, we don't do a great job at this, but whenever our budget is so close to what we end up spending at the end of the year, we should just make sure, as opposed to just, you know, push to the side, because I'm even surprised that we were that close, because you can't really estimate these things that closely, but this one and the, one of the previous line items that you talked about, those are good things for us to share, because it shows that a lot of attention, a lot of thought went into it to make sure that we were within those limits. And those limits are limiting. I mean, you know, we are so tight, we can't even make some changes whenever we want to, so we try to remain within those, and we seem to have managed, at least on some critical line items, to do just that, and we should talk about that. FY eighteen?
So FY eighteen, I mean, we're kind of in the summer place of budget, we'd say budget building or budget rebuilding, because salaries change, and that's probably the main things that happen. We have teachers relieved, and we have, you know, other employees who are hired, so we're in the process of finalizing those hires and getting those into the budget, so, and then there's other things that happen too, you know, changes in tuitions, we get new contracts in. So I would say probably, in September, we'll come to school committee with a proposed revised line item budget. I mean, the number cannot change, the number is the number that's voted, but reallocations occur, just because we end up needing more money in some places and not in others. So we're kind of in that process right now. Very close, very tight right now, depending on some things that are happening in sped. We thought we might have a few dollars here, we may not, we'll have a conversation with the sped director and see what additional tuitions might be coming in, so, but it's not like, not like we went one way or the other over the summer, saying we're in the hole by a hundred thousand dollars, or, look, we have all this money that's been like that, so we have, hope we're in one way or the other after all said and done.
And when do you expect that to happen, by our next meeting, or?
Probably, yeah, we normally don't do the financials at the first meeting, but by the second, I think we will.
And just so the committee is aware, I did speak with Mr. Martin about two unanticipated tuitions that are coming to the district. One is an out-of-district placement, that's out of our hands, and we do not have a real voice in it, and for confidentiality, we won't get into the details, but he's aware. And the second is another tuition, a family that goes within the town, and which we are responsible for tuition as well. So he's aware of those, and as Mark said, they'll be in the budget, and we talked about them, but they are unanticipated, so we will be moving through the process of how that works.
Does that put us over the one-third cap?
Uh, yes.
See how easy that happens? Just like that?
Well, just like that, because there is really no logic to the way they put together the process.
Well, then, there's also no coffers to absorb that from, you know, when you're sitting on several hundred thousand dollars in school choice or circuit breaker as a buffer, and you're just riding these things out, and you'll make it up in a couple of years, what you have now.
And that's absolutely the case, but, you know, saying, within the same law, people move to your district, you can't really get extra money for those folks, but people moving to your district, and you're responsible for the additional expenses, such as, you know, sped and everything else, there is really no way a district can win. It's basically an attempt to dump all the financial burden on the districts, and districts that can handle the burden, they handle it, because they have some buffer, they have, you know, other funds available to them, whatever it is, they just, you know, year after year, they handle their fluctuations that way. Districts like ours, we can't, we can't handle it, you know? We don't win this way, we don't win that way, so there is no way to win, you know?
I think districts who can absorb those costs, that's diminishing as well.
Oh, yeah, 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 especially on the western side of the state, or so, anyway. FY eighteen, anything else? Okay. Next, we have school committee goals, but we talked about those somewhat, so we already have some action items to run with. Next, we have school committee goals, but we talked about those somewhat. So, we already have some action items, uh, to run with. Do we know, you had mentioned that for the website on the fourteenth, there was going to be a switch over.
So, we had training on the fourteenth. Um, there's some new posts up today that make reference to that. Um, so the people that are responsible for updating, uh, the websites at the school level or the department level have received their training. Um, so hopefully parents will start to see, uh, information being populated. Uh, there is a post on the district page, front page to please, um, email me if there is information that you're looking for that you can't find. Uh, I seem to be the conduit and I'm happy to be so. Um, and I can get the information, um, either up if it has to be up or into the hands of people who will be putting it up. So, uh, I think a good example is the athletics page. Um, Ally, the athletic director, uh, is doing a nice job getting information up for families. Uh, and as the admin assistants come back on board, um, you should start to see the information that's, that's there.
So, what about for the kindergartens? I heard there was another, um, concern that it was a little bit slow in getting out there. Is that, is that all set now?
Is that the playdate or?
Uh, the playdate, but just, I guess, just, uh, the general information.
Sure.
For, for upcoming kindergarteners, I guess.
Can we take the, uh, school calendar out of the digital backpack and put it as a separate item? Because I'm guessing that's one of the main things that folks are looking for. And my second request would be, is it possible to look at some other districts like Belcher Towns? And we may have, uh, mentioned this before. I apologize if we did. Um, create redundancies in, in different ways. Create redundancies in the, in the way that the district landing page kind of represents the entire district, including all schools. Anything that is potentially important to all, um,
Right.
visitors, that should be upfront, visible somewhere so that people can go to those quickly. And, uh, we can create redundancies in the, um, individual school pages. Okay.
Unfortunately, everybody's sort of in charge of each page. Um, there is no way to manage the entire website from one location. So, that makes it a little bit challenging. Um, but yes, there are redundancies. A good example is the calendar. The calendar at the district level is fed all of the information from all of the schools and the athletics department. But at the school level, it's only the school. Uh, so that's a good example. If there are, uh, is, if there is information that is, uh, school level, um, specific, but the principal or the admin assistant wants to bring it up to the district level, um, they have the capacity to do that. So, as I said, certainly if people are not finding what they need to find, um, just send, um, you know, me the email and you're going to be fine.
Great. And, uh,
Can, can you leave the school calendar in the digital backpack? Plus, put it in another place there?
Yes.
Because I've directed some people to the digital backpack. So, if you look at the,
Just to look for it.
Okay.
Thank you. No, that's okay.
At the bottom of the website, there is, um, and one of the things I did do is look at others, uh, at school districts because it doesn't make a lot of sense under quick links. Um, but there's a, there was a very nice site that had, at the very bottom in the footer, it had, um, you know, the information to contact the district and then it had the mission vision. But in the middle, it had a section that just said, you know, um, good to know, basically. So, the calendar. So, if you were on your phone and you scrolled all the way to the bottom, you could pick up the school year calendar and anything like that that was current that, um, you wanted to have quick access to. So, um, yes, we're working on that.
Yeah. Um, we, from a usability perspective, when we talk about our own creation, we know that it looks good. You know, we, we have a purpose and we have, uh, uh, good thoughts behind it. But from a user's perspective, it's not always easy, easy to find the information. So, how do we find that path? And as far as digital backpack, when we approved it a couple of years ago, when Judy, uh, proposed it, it was supposed to be for things that could not be included in the overall things, like, uh, you know, some outside organization, nonprofit. Exactly. They are just, they want to advertise. That's, that's what we were going to do. And if we want to create redundancies, it's good. But it took me a while to, to, uh, really find that, to, to say, you know what? Let me just click on everything.
Yeah.
With that, one last word and then thank you because last time we also mentioned that if you go to the calendar, you could not really see what the event was about. You could not see the title. Looks like we made, uh, good changes to that. There is a description of events and there is a full title of the event. Thank you for doing that, whoever contributed to that.
Well, I have to say, I'm on the website now and this is a breeze compared to when I was on my phone trying to use,
It looks, I mean, doesn't it look great?
It's like one click.
I have to say, I mean, it's going to take some time to get all the information up and there's a post from me personally that says, thank you for your patience.
I saw that. Thank you very much.
But the, there are two huge benefits to this platform. One is the mobile device, the ease of the transition between devices. So, if you're on an iPad, it is going to display appropriately and, and screen wise to the device. So, if you're on your phone, it's only going to give you as much of the phone that you can see. The other thing is that it is, um, it makes us be ADA compliant. So, before we put up, um, information, you have to have a title. And that's important because Lynn Public Schools right now is in the middle of a Office of Civil Rights investigation because their website is not ADA compliant. So, the things for deaf, blind, um, people to be able to access becomes a civil rights issue when someone can't apply for a job because the website is not compliant for them. And so, they can't engage in it. So, this site makes you do all of the tagging, um, so that we are compliant. So, that our students and our families that need auditory assistance, um, need the picture read to them so that it says what it is. We have to do that work in the background or it will not post. Um, and so, it's forcing us to learn and to be in a good habit of, of creating a good website that everyone can have accessibility to.
Um, do we have a link to guidance anywhere?
Uh, so guidance isn't back yet. Um, uh, do we have it yet? Um, I believe the link is there, but the information is not yet.
Okay, I don't want to,
I believe they have under departments.
I looked, they,
Oh, they have media center? Okay. Um, let me have to open it now. So, I will.
Alright. I mean, we're getting pretty close to, you know, the first day of school. I'm sure there are some things that folks may want to find.
Mm-hmm.
To Dan's point, you know, it looks, it looks like a much easier website to look at, read, uh, browse through. So, thank you for that. Um, so we have one more item left, upcoming business. Is it upcoming business you want to discuss today or?
Um, no, we don't have to do it today. I want to bring your attention to, um, actually probably four upcoming, um, business items that I put in the folder for you. Um, three of them are the result of our coordinated program review and changes in policy and procedure that we have to, uh, discuss, change, revise and vote. Uh, one is the bullying policy, uh, which requires us to, um, establish a prevention and intervention plan for bullying. So, that is in your folder. Uh, the second is the curriculum, uh, review cycle. Uh, needs to be updated. Uh, we need to review, uh, all of our curriculum documents and provide training to staff on, um, bias, all types of bias, uh, so that when we are, um, reviewing our curriculum material, that is part of our process. Uh, so that is in there. Uh, there is also a physical restraint, um, uh, policy change that we need to, uh, re-understand and adopt. It's based on changes in the law. And then finally, uh, there is a, uh, budget development timeline document, which I had introduced last year. Um, and that's important because, um, on Thursday, we will be having a bylaw committee meeting. Uh, and the important date is that June first date, um, for the town meeting to go finance a portion of the town meeting. Uh, that really needs to happen before June first. So, um, those are the four documents that I'd be happy to, um, discuss on the fifth.
And so that we, we're not going to be discussing it tonight?
Yeah, if you want to.
Well, I just had a question. I,
I, I put it, well, some of these were in and then some of them got added. So, I didn't want to overwhelm everybody. So,
I was just reviewing the budget calendar and I just had a question.
Sure.
So, I noticed that, um, we only have one joint meeting in January. So, I was just wondering if that was enough. To me, it feels like one is not enough.
I think January is fine if we can do one more later on.
Agree. Especially as we really start to get into the details of the budget.
Yeah. Cause January, we're not going to have the, uh, final state budget or anything close to it, probably. Um, depending on the timing, even the governor is not really required to post his version or her version, um, by the what, third week?
Uh, January.
And, oh, January, right? So,
So, maybe we need to meet like in late February or early March or something.
So, that first meeting is good for us to discuss the parameters and what we're trying to do, how we're aligning with certain, uh, objectives of the district. And then when numbers become a little more concrete, we can have that meeting later on.
And, and also our challenges up to that point. You know, any sort of deficits that we might be in, uh, just, you know, just kind of a status update from the beginning of the school year to, to that point.
Yeah.
And then I, I think that another meeting after we, you know, start hearing about the state budget makes sense, at least, at least in the long run. I know we had initially talked about quarterly.
All that said, from a, you know, meeting effectiveness perspective, we should have a purpose for all these meetings. We should not just meet to meet. So, what you're suggesting for January, you know, talking about the gaps so far and what we'll learn, where we're going, that would be great. The follow-up, uh, meeting with the purpose of sharing the more concrete numbers that we have, that will be great. If we can find similar purpose for other, uh, occasions to get together, that's fine. Uh, we can, we can at least propose. You know, we can guarantee everyone's going to show up, but,
Yeah, and it,
Yep. So, there's some, there's some information in November that gets shared, um, uh, to the town and to the school department that I think once the town and the school partnership meeting happens, that sometime in mid to late November is probably a really good opportunity to have a joint meeting of the committees because you're reviewing, um, you know, the final reconciliations and any issues. But then you're also looking at any changes in enrollment that are affecting the budget. Uh, and all of the things that, um, affect our budget until we, until we turn around enrollment are affecting us negatively. So, the chapter seventy, the, um, the final grant awards, which have all been down, uh, this year because of our enrollment. Um, and then, uh, all of the things, as you know, tuition and transportation. So, so, so I think coming together and having that as a joint meeting instead of wondering who's telling who, I think is a great idea.
So, then maybe you said the end of November?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. So, adding one for the end of November, um, maybe around the thirtieth of January and maybe, um, the beginning of March?
Yeah. Let's do it last week of January so we know that we have the initial numbers from the state.
So, you want end of,
When do we start? I don't know. School choice. The date we got new school.
School choice to, to find out if anybody's interested. I don't know. Cheryl will be.
So, I'm thinking we might, might start to see an increase and we'll be prepared for that.
Yeah. I mean, with the, with the six divisional seats that we approved, there is intent to accommodate and look for different ways.
And we don't want to let those new seats go, go to waste.
Right.
New school.
So, November, January and March?
Yep. And then, don't we typically have one anyway in April-ish, right?
Well, we may want to move that March meeting to early April and leave it at three at this point.
Well, part of the, part of the issue is that, um, in order to meet what I hope is going to be a change in the town parameters, we have to be ready for early May. So, everything has to kind of get pumped up another month ahead. So, March is probably appropriate for the joint because that gives us some feedback on finance around the budget.
Alright.
We would have to be ready to go to meeting.
Makes sense.
We were, we are not going to have May to June anymore.
Okay.
We have to have it all upfront and ready to go in May.
Can we,
Alright. So, then, end of November, end of January, beginning, beginning mid-March.
Um, this is not a policy, is it? So, we can vote without first reading or second reading on this one. In fact, we've been talking about this for a while anyway. Uh, so this is one of the iterations. Let's finalize this and share it with everybody at our next meeting. We get one more chance to look at it. The other ones are policies. So, we're going to have to do first reading, second reading and all. Okay.
Yep. We probably waive the first because it'll be in there. You'll have it. Um, and then hopefully do a, a second read. Um, one of them does revolve around professional development. Um, so, um, it's been incorporated to a document that we'll be providing staff in terms of professional development.
Okay.
But it's only a requirement.
I also think that when you add these three meetings to put some context around what, what specifically they're for.
Jen, are you on the policy? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
Alright. That's good. Is there anything else that, well, actually we have the standing reports, don't we? Do you have a report tonight?
Uh, my report, um, is that I turned, no, this is,
That's the most important report.
Yes. Um, heard feedback, um, uh, about the website. So, trying to incorporate, uh, information as quickly as we can. The school bus routes were uploaded today. Um, if there's any questions that parents have about, uh, a route, uh, they're not seeing their spouse, they can call, uh, the school, uh, the bus company directly, uh, to rectify that. Um, uh, who else want to update?
See, that's what happens with it.
There was an announcement about, about, uh, fall sports.
Uh, just that registration is, uh, ongoing right now for fall sports. I know.
Oh, that's good. That's plenty. Thank you.
No, I didn't have a formal one because I was very busy on trying to get this stuff done. So,
No, we understand.
You will notice though that the blog has had, um, some information in it. Um, that's going to all get moved to announcements and then the blog will be the superintendent update.
Awesome.
So, that will be the blog. That'll be cool.
That's cool. Can we incorporate some of the, uh, feeds that we have from Twitter or Facebook or whatever?
Yes. If you notice on the website, in the bottom left-hand corner, although it's kind of small, there's the Facebook feed and the Twitter feed.
Yep.
So, they're there. So, now that the school year will be up and running, um, we will be, uh, back on our Facebook and Twitter feeds. So,
So, does that mean somebody like me who's not on Facebook or Twitter?
Right. Yep.
Can still tweet?
You can tap on it and just look.
Okay. I can stop? What is it called?
Yes.
I don't know what you, or, or, or.
So, if you don't want to catch up with Times, Times will catch up with you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good. Thank you. Do we, do you have any updates from the collaborative?
I just went to the last meeting in June. There was a quick talk about, you know, the kids with trauma, and a woman had gone to a presentation where their kids were being raised by grandparents. It's creating a lot of stress in the school system and the family units, it's, you know, a combined effort. And the collaborative is now starting to think about, maybe they should, you know, spend a little time and effort in that, in that space. Well, they have plans to remodel and redesign the OTC and the CCAT centers, make them more cost-effective, and try to market those a little bit more effectively. The CWBE, I think they're called it, the collab, uh, the Community Work-Based Program. I think there was only two or three students from outside the collaborative district that were still part of that, so there was some question as to how long that was actually going to, you know, stay, stay open. They did an annual survey about the, about, you know, what they've been doing with the work on, you know, the collaborative, especially with, you know, the key challenges and goals with regards to the teacher's professional development. There seems to have been a lot of positive feedback around, you know, helping teachers feel equipped with the SED inclusions. There was some big, there was a really lengthy show about this after-school setup they have in East Hampton, and Granby has one similar, but East Hampton's, I think, is done by the collaborative, whereas Granby's were, were a little bit part of it. I was, I was reading the other document here, where we, where we take on some parts of the role that they do, but I think in East Hampton, it's all done by the collaborative, and they're trying to market that to other school districts. And then the last thing was, I don't, I don't know what's going on with this bill, because I haven't paid much attention to it, but there was talk and concern about this H three seven three six, and the impacts that might have in the schools, where that requires somebody who doesn't speak English as a first language to be able to get everything they need in their own language, which could put a lot of stress on the school districts who don't have those interpreters for them. Those were the updates I had from that.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? How's the participation now at those meetings? Is it as lively as it was at the first one?
Uh, there seems to be, like, that was my first meeting, there seems to be a few people that, you know, have been there for a while and are regulars.
Yeah.
And they, they tend to have a lot of conversations that the rest of us are trying to figure out what's going on.
Yeah.
I'm hoping over time, I can actually partake in some of those conversations.
Yeah, I would say, don't wait, just jump in, because, you know...
Yeah.
As you said, there are a lot of people who've been there for a little while. Good. Thank you very much. Since Mike did this CES stuff, there was a memorandum of understanding in our folder.
Yes. And unfortunately, it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So...
Is it urgent?
I am happy to review it.
If it's not urgent, since it's not on the agenda, I would say, let's just postpone it to next time. If it is urgent, if it's an emergency, then we can do it.
I did have one question, as I was reading through it. It talks about twelve students. Is that for the whole thing for both schools, or does each school have to have twelve students? It seems to me if they had...
I think each school...
Like a ten and a two, that would be difficult, right?
I think they need the twenty-five, twenty-four, right, twelve and twelve.
So, twelve and twelve, okay.
They need that minimally to run the program right now. I think they have thirty-two or more.
Okay. Now, as we begin our next questions, what is the interest like?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So, can we do it next time without any harm to this?
Harm to ballot?
Okay. All right. Next, we have the West Street Building Committee. We had our meeting, in fact, we had a walkthrough the other day, which was very nice to see that everything is coming together, and we can at least, within that skeleton, say, oh, this is a classroom, this is a SED room, this is, you know, the hallway. The East Meadow Cafeteria was about to be done. Things are not really changing in terms of the shape of the cafeteria, but they had redone everything. The most impressive part was the kitchen, which was brand-new with all the equipment and everything. That's going to be the only part of East Meadow that's going to be updated now. Everything else remains the same, because school's about to start, that was the plan anyway. Then, when February comes around, all students will, all students in East Meadow will move to the new building, because that construction will continue, and they're going to then tear apart everything in East Meadow and update East Meadow, and work through the summer months as well to finish it for the next, for school, next school year. Let me see. As far as the timing, everything is within timing. Budget, everything is within budget. We may even have some good news on the budget side, at least based on what we know right Let me see. In terms of the, the furniture and everything else, which is the FFE part, or what they call the FFE part of the budget, they are right in the process of determining what exactly will be coming to the new school. But everything is progressing as, as planned nicely, and that's, that's about it.
So, we're still on track for, so we're still on track for beginning of next year, right?
We're on track for the beginning of next year. They actually, so far, did everything as planned, including the pavement that went down, because, you know, the rain was coming unexpectedly, and if it had rained too much, they could have postponed that, but, you know, thankfully, they didn't have to do that. Everything so far is going according to plan, and they are on budget, you know, with everything happening the way expected. So, so knock on wood. We're hoping that next fall, we're going to be opening our new school. Policy subcommittee, Jen?
Yeah, we need to schedule that.
Yeah. Just wrote it down.
I couldn't...
Cool. Anything that we did not talk about that we were supposed to? Okay. Our next meeting is on September fifth. It's going to be right after our schools open, so we're going to have some more conversations around that.
Is that Tuesday?
Yeah, because it's the Labor Day.
Labor Day.
Monday.
Right. And it's starting at six-thirty?
It is, yes.
So, I'll more than likely be late.
Okay. All right. So, with that, that concludes the open session of our meeting. Now, we're going to vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, Part A three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, in an open session, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Can we have a roll call, please?
Deanne Kay Murkowski, aye. Jennifer Kern, aye.
Emma Raven, aye.
Mike Simpson, aye.